Okay, we're going to call this meeting to your board. I pledge allegiance to the way of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been posted in all the normal posting places. And now we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm ready. I have a second by Lindsay. Any discussion? All in favor that say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. We're out to the minutes, we have four meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, July 20th. At 5:15 PM open close session, Monday, July 20th, 6:00 PM open session, Monday, August 3rd, 6:00 PM open session, and Monday, August 17th, 5:00 PM in session.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any additions, corrections? In all favor then say aye.
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 Hold same sign. Motion's carried. We're out to the financial report and bill listing.
I'll make a motion to approve the document listing. Payroll check number 553785, the amount of $340.23. Check number 553786, the amount of $401.73. Direct deposit 900052305, 900052387, the amount $434,082.19. Direct deposit 900052388, 900052494, the amount of $137,000. $137.84. Direct deposit 900052495 through 900052584, the amount $139,999.43. Player number 20200011 through 2020042, the amount of $352,890.56. Total payroll of $753,000, $72.72. Account payable, check number 54342 through 54423, the amount of $258,930.1. AP wire transfer 20200018 through 2020048, the amount of $2,700.64. Credit card transaction 072020, the amount of $77,849.19. Direct deposit number 202100003 through 202100009, the amount of $989.43. Total accounts payable of $340,469.7. Total gross income of $11,000,211.99.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we're on delegations to be heard.
Jennifer, do you want to grab the sheet or anything? There's nothing online. You.
I had signed my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'd like to discuss several items and have some questions. That at least in the past three board meetings that I've attended, I haven't heard much of any discussion on that relates to how the school year and various things. And I think it's important that we hear from the board and from the administration on some of those things and what some plans are. But before I do that, I'd like to address and comment on one specific thing that was said at the last board meeting on August 17th. And it occurred at roughly the 5240 mark in the recorded meeting. School Board members Spindler made the statement, "Local decisions are great, don't get me wrong, but now it's back to you, Jay, Becca, and the board to make health decisions." And I think that's a very dangerous thing to say as a local elected official. And my first reaction was one of anger and frustration, and then it ultimately turned to sadness that that one of our local officials would 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 feel strongly enough and moved enough to to say that. You know, I've sat through a few of these meetings now, and unfortunately, I heard Mr. Spindler make comments about how certain government regulations or state mandates can be interpreted different ways by different people, and that's a problem potentially. And unfortunately, the only way I can interpret his statement that night was that he's okay with making easy decisions, local decisions, but if they're difficult decisions, that, you know, he'd rather someone else make those decisions. And first, I would I would say to all the elected board members tonight, I sincerely hope and pray that there's not one of you up there that truly want to give away any local decision making. On behalf of the residents and the taxpayers here, I sincerely hope that. And if you do feel that way, that's okay, I understand that. But then I think if you feel that way, you you owe it to the people that elected you to step aside and resign if you feel that way, and let people that can make tough decisions make those decisions, because there are people out there willing to do that. Second, you know, I'd point out that each of you ran for the school board to make local decisions on the education of our kids. You know, and I think framing it as a health decision is missing out on the core job description and responsibilities. You know, how best can we set up our kids for educational success? You know, what what are the educational impacts going virtual versus in person? These are just some of the questions that, you know, as school board members, you all need to answer and and help our kids succeed educationally. You know, I just want to point out, you know, there's, you know, as of August 30th, the data on the state website, DHS, there's not one kid in the state, in the county, in our school district that have died from COVID. And 99.87% of the residents of the county of Waukesha are COVID-3, they do not have an infection. You know, but I can tell you, by shutting our schools down this spring, and if we elect to do that again, either a local decision or somewhere else, we will effectively kill the educational pace that our kids are learning, as well as the social and emotional development of our kids. And last, with regards to that statement, I would just point out, you know, the health decision as as it's framed on August 17th. You know, the board provided families in the district with an option, either in person 100% or 100% virtual. The board and the administration has also done a great job providing the families with an update on the improved and high-tech cleaning that will be done this year that was never done before. It's with that knowledge and with that option that the decision for health decisions is and where it always should be with the parents. That's where that's where a health decision is made. The the only thing that the board and the administration can do is put together plans that help mitigate any potential virus issues and let the parents decide if their kids, if they want to send their kids to school or if they want to do virtual. And I think you guys have done a great job in in the options that you've provided us. It's pretty clear, if if you want to send your kids, you can, if you don't, great, we got a virtual option, you can do that. And you've done a great job in the mitigation, the social distancing, the mask mandate, those are all things that can help and families can make the decision for themselves. So the the next item I'd like to hear from the board and the administration on is regarding what what plans or what scenarios would you envision shutting school again? You know, for example, the last last board meeting, there was a little bit of discussion on, you know, where the data would come from, how the data would be looked at, and, you know, so it got the wheels turning into questions that I hadn't heard discussed before. And some of those questions are basic, and and I understand that maybe in in school planning and offline, the administration has talked about some of these things, but at least from the website perspective, I couldn't find anything yesterday and today as to what are the potential scenarios, so. You know, a couple of easy questions, is there a plan or isn't there a plan? If there is a plan, when is it going to be communicated? I understand that the data you might be look at, it's going to have to be kind of a real-time decision, but you you must have guide rails that you're going to be looking at or measurable markers that you're going to be looking at. Would any plan take into consideration the number of cases within our school, within our district, county, state, how would that be looked at? What, if any, ways would the plan look at historical trends in our absenteeism or bad flu seasons or various things? I'm sure there were times where we had 50 or 75 or 100 kids out between the two schools, and I just want to know if if that's getting any weight or discussion. You know, and I know in a few meetings I've attended, there's a lot of concern about cases, whatever that means, because it's a very broad statement to say there's cases. We don't know if those are asymptomatic cases, we don't know if those are elderly folks with pre-existing conditions, we don't know. But what I've yet to hear talk about is the educational risks of in-person and virtual or the mental, social, and emotional trauma that kids are experiencing. They aren't necessarily our district, or or that might not be 100% of the kids in our district. We haven't talked about the increases in in suicides and depression and sexual assault that is is happening all over this country because of the shutdowns. I'd also like to know how how many teachers can be out, either ill or, you know, self-quarantine in advance, you know, of something, you know, as, or how many substitute teachers we have that, you know, before we run into a problem? And then just what kind of ongoing communication can we expect from the board of the district on a plan and what we're monitoring? I know we can't say number of cases in our school, we talked about that, I've heard that before, but can we have a green, yellow, red system established to say, hey, we're we're running green right now, or we're running yellow, you know, if we're red for more than five consecutive days, you know, what can be developed? And the basis for the question, the basis for wanting to be kept informed goes back to something I've said to all of you at prior board meeting, which is parents need time to put contingency plans in place with their families, with their employers, and we need time to prepare our kids that change might be coming. We know that kids do much better and thrive with consistency and routines. And I I know there was nothing we could do this spring when we all woke up one day with an email saying, "School's canceled, we're going virtual, we don't know what that's going to look like, but we're going virtual, and we don't know when we're coming back." I just sincerely hope that the board and the administration has a plan so that we don't wake up one day with an email from Dr. Ross saying, "We're going virtual, don't know when we're coming back." So I'd like to hear from you guys either tonight or in the near term, you know, school's starting tomorrow and and I don't know what the plan is, and I don't know how to keep my kids informed as to, you know, because I get the question, are they going to shut down school again? Are we going to school? Yeah, we're going to school for now. You know, I can't guarantee it's going to be forever, so I want to be able to have conversations with my kids and let them know. So I thank you for the time tonight, and hopefully we can address some of these things.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on, number of those issues we've covered.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No business.
Okay, so we're on to administrator report.
So thank you. No donations, those are. But we do have some person. I think it's someone who did missions, right? Correct. Yeah. We've got, so we've got two letters of resignation from John Metzschad and Jerry Frye. And we wish both Jerry and John the best of luck. Jerry's going to be heading to the Waukesha School District, and John is heading to the Waukesha School District in their respective positions. And then also in front of us for personnel actions for hires, we did move Martine Caselwitz from the Mass Specialist into Jerry Frye role to fill that position. We did make several phone calls, and again, we weren't able to find anybody, but we're real excited to have Martine slide into that. Martine's been with the district for 70 years now and has thought second before bringing her on, so real excited to get that, because we did the role of teacher too. So we really appreciate her willingness to jump right in, given the limited notice. We also are bringing forward several layers of appointment. We have Stephanie Jancourt in 4K and primary supervision, Michelle Selly increasing her hours, moving from part-time to full-time. Stephanie Satula, special ed supervision, Nicole Borash for special ed and regular ed, and then Jennifer Adams. Jennifer Adams is another one we are moving from full-time to part-time. I'm sorry, part-time to full-time, opposite way, moving forward too. So just looking for three separate motions from the board. One to approve the letters of resignation from Jerry Frye and John Metzschad, as well as the motion to approve the letters of appointment, and then the individual contract from Martine Caselwitz.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of resignation of John Metzschad and Jerry Frye.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any discussion? This is, big thank you, long time. And we're all, we're all, all time members of our staff here. The other discussion, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion's carried. We've got the letters of appointment. Roll them all together. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve your case of, from district mass specialist to position of very great teacher. Then Stephanie Jancourt to 4K primary supervision, Michelle Selly, special education supervision from part-time before. Stephanie Satula, special ed supervision, Nicole Borash, special and regular education, Jennifer Adams to 4K special education supervision. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion to carry that both teaching position and all the letters of appointment. Okay. You have some information, just all all this to the next agenda. Okay, we're on to new business, discussions around the Paul Reels.
So thanks, everybody, again, and we'll we'll get to some of the comments. The metric is really a conversation piece that a lot of people are having conversations around, not just in Merton Community School District, but all over the state of Wisconsin. The reason why we don't have a metric for it is Waukesha County, our local health department, as well as the State Department of Health, refuse to give a set defined percentage limit metric surrounding when to shut down schools. Instead, they have offered guidance, and they are they are offering help to speak to Waukesha. Waukesha County Health and Human Services have given us guidance, they have given us the Harvard model. If you take a look at the Harvard model, it is a percentage of individuals that have COVID over a period of seven days. And that model is very, very aggressive, it really is. You want to talk about red, yellow, green, the Merton Community School District is in the red. Be honest with you, we are in the red when you do the metric for the Merton Community School District in our census data, we are in the red. Andrew highlighted some statistics, we have a less than a 0.2% of individuals in the census tracts that we serve, which is the Village of Hartland, the Village of Merton, the Town of Lisbon, and the Town of Merton. Now, we service very small pieces of all of those except the entire Village of Merton. There is less than a 0.2 positive COVID case cases in those four census tracts. Then they take a look at, so that's just one part of it, okay, and they say, "Look at that over a seven-day period." I have historical data, there's times that we go up and down given our census tracts. The piece that they stress, though, is take a look at your local data and see what is happening in your schools. As of yesterday, I didn't look today, as of yesterday, we had one positive COVID case in the entire Arrowhead system. Seven COVID cases for all all students who aren't part of our system, or they are, or either homeschool, you know, private school, whatever it is, for people being ages zero and 19. Seven. We also, so when you take a look at our our school data, when you take a look at our community data, and not the county data, it's another piece, but that is what's going to be used to drive local decision-making. I do want to comment before I I forget, as Andrew started about how Phil did make the comment about, well, now it's up to Ron, Becca, Jay, in essence, it's up to Ron. From here on out, without a board motion, without coming back together as a board, closing the school now has rested with me, it has. I can tell you that we will continue to communicate with Waukesha County, I'll continue to keep the school board up to pace about what it is, and continue to utilize all of the information that I possibly can gather. And that's working identically and right next to collaboratively with Ben Jones, the the guy who's in charge of all of this, as well as his team, which continues to expand. They hired over 60 people. They have defined us as, we're in Zone 3 in all of Waukesha County, we have point people that we are to to connect with, and we had, we did communication immediately. Today, I emailed, you know, you know, Waukesha County's Own 3 email, I got, I was back to, somebody got back to me within two hours. Which was excellent, which was excellent, because they are going to be the partners when we start to communicate about if-then's contact tracing and really starting to really get me involved with people and getting me connected to the people who are going to help us make the decision on whether we close school or not from a COVID health department standpoint. Now, yes, a lot of that is, do we have positive COVID cases? Do we have people in quarantine? Again, because you can be in quarantine without and not symptoms at all. We know that we just identified to our parents that if you have two COVID-like symptoms and you don't have a pre-existing condition, you are, it is recommended that you quarantine for 10 days. That recommendation, we have to do, we are going to take that recommendation, because that is what even Waukesha County is telling us to do, is if you have a child that has those symptoms. Now, those are not going to go into our determination, in my opinion, if we close school.
But but point of clarification, when you say you're going to take that recommendation, are you saying you're going to implement and make a kid stay home for 10 days?
Yes, I have to.
And but but under what authority does this? No one's told me, I can't find anywhere on Waukesha, what authority?
We gave you a chance.
Yep.
I don't allow the Waukesha County.
Or our board being here.
We have, we have the local authority, we have been given the local authority, and and this is where it's going to be very difficult, and parents are going to have to understand. And I just had another conversation, because we went through this again with Gail, with conversation with the D E I. And we will, we will work through those things, what's underlying and what is, what really is at the heart of things, but we are going to have to work collaboratively with families. But ultimately, Waukesha County has directed us through the CDC, the state, and Waukesha County is endorsing that action for symptoms. So I do not have, we do not have no school district as a set metric, because believe me, my goal is to keep kids in school as long as possible, given the safety measures that we have in place, but ultimately taking a look at what's happening not only at county level, but what's happening in our census, what's happening in our schools, what's happening in a classroom, what's happening at a grade level, what's happening at a school. So we will go through all of those steps, we're going to take a look at prior history. Again, a lot of school districts are talking about, okay, do we consider this very similar to the common flu, where we do run when there's 10% of our kids out? I talked to Barb and Melissa during the flu season and say, hey, how are we doing? So those types of metrics, and as we get into this, we will continue to refine, but ultimately, the only hard metric we have is the Harvard model, and we don't want to go by the Harvard model. As we're, Waukesha County has said, let's kick in local data from the school district standpoint. Again, our school district is small, but you can go on the Waukesha County COVID dashboard, and you can find out every school district in Waukesha County by their area about how many students or how many people, I should say people, through the ages of zero and 19 are positive cases of COVID yet.
And that, everybody.
Everyone, everybody in the public, yep. That is where we have been, we have been telling people, if somebody says, Ron, what information are you using, that's the same information I get, right there. Outside of the phone call, which I haven't gotten one, which I'm expecting sometime, when DHS calls me up and says, said student, said staff member has tested positive. Ron, we need your team to contact Tris. Then we do our thing. We are ready, we have all of the, we we have access to Waukesha County documentation. It is in conjunction with a lot of the the letters that are going home. From a positive standpoint, are both Waukesha County and Merton locals on it, so we we are in complete partnership with the county as we move forward with this, to help us in this determination of, the big question is, when do we shut down school? We will look at it as a as an Arrowhead consortium, as Waukesha County, we will get down to the micro. As, again, my goal would be to shut down a classroom, a school, or a grade level, then a school, and then the district, because of how, and we're going to look at that detail before we just make a clear swipe across the across the board.
Well, aren't you going to choose to close?
Yes, it will.
And of Arrowhead, so if any of the other schools and or Arrowhead should choose to close, our decision will be independent of that.
Correct, correct, yep, yep. Another school district will not force us into closing. Correct. Now, some of those might close, if we have a community widespread, we would be part of that conversation if it was a community widespread. But those school districts, just like us, would look at their local internal data, is that is going to be the number one driving factor, and we've all talked about our situation being very, very different, whether it be from a from a COVID standpoint, because some school districts can't socially distance like we can. They can't, some school districts don't have a virtual platform, or their or their families do. So every school district is going to have to take it step by step, look at their individual data and do what they feel is in the best interest of their families and their students as well. But again, we we take it very, very seriously, no different than closing on a snow day. It is very, very serious closing, closing us down, or telling the child, or telling the family that they need to make arrangements for the next 10 to 14 days. Our virtual learning plan is designed specifically to have kids bounce in and out. In and out, whether it's in, more than likely, it's going to be because of symptoms, and it could be possibly because we have some positive COVID cases. It should not be happening because we have contact tracing happening here, where we have one COVID case, should not shut down a classroom. That has been, that has been confirmed by Waukesha County, we don't expect one staff member shuts down. At all, so from a COVID standpoint. Another metric that Mr. Lang brought up, though, is what we're going to be looking at is our staff. That is the biggest fear that all of our school districts have, and we take a look across the state, is is are we going to have enough people to staff our buildings? From a substitute teacher standpoint, from a, a just from, not even a substitute teacher, from instructional assistants to bus drivers, to all of the functions, food service, all of those functions that go into running the school system, it's not just about the teachers in front of of kids. So we have approximately, in our buildings, probably approximately 80 people that are, what I would say, more to the educational involvement, okay? Instructional assistants, teachers, administrators, you know, custodians are are part of that, because they come in after the kids are here, for the most part. They they do provide vital function throughout the day. We feel comfortable. Um, we feel comfortably that we can handle approximately eight to ten absences. Uh, we hired three, two building subs, a floor instructional assistant. We've got, uh, with, with Martika leaving the, the map specialist role that found one person who's, who's flexible. Um, the business office is ready to go, Jen's ready to go, uh, our principals are ready. Uh, you know, so we do have every person on deck going, you know, as all of these people are ready and they understand that this year is going to be very, very different and that in front of the bucket, we need something to do something. But we feel confident that we can staff eight to ten. Uh, people would still continue to maintain, uh, educational integrity, when I say integrity, as in like, we still need people to man the front desks, we still need people answering phones, you know, we, we have, uh, special education we're responsible for. And, uh, so that, that's kind of, you know, not a magic number, but if we get higher than that, we're, we're going to be scraping. Um, because we know our sub pool, we've got, it, it all depends on the day, on the subs we actually have. We were blessed with about five or six people who said, I want a substitute teacher, I can help. So, uh, we did have, have some, some, some community members say, I don't know what I'm doing, but I'll figure it out. Great, so those people are always great, we appreciate that. Um, but the, the sub pool, I will tell you, I don't think we have one retired teacher coming back. So, um, because it's, you know, obviously retired teachers are in, in an age category that puts them higher at risk. But, uh, we, we, there's not a lot of retired teachers who we really leaned on in the past, uh, to do that too. Um, we know the other sub pool, uh, from the teachers on call standpoint, and even, even talking to other schools, is, is good substitute teachers have been snatched up like we did for two building subs, I mean, there's a lot of people that are already paid in the, the districts that they, they were working for as well, so. Um, that is my biggest concern is making sure that we have staff. Uh, because just like kids, if they have symptoms of COVID, they need to honor that, that, uh, quarantine process too as well. We, uh, we encourage them if they are well, like they typically are when they're flu season, when they come, like all of us go to work. Um, we will have them engaged through the virtual platform equipment on the smart board, and we will have someone in the classroom who will assist in that day's supervision and that day's education. Um, in the past, uh, we were blessed enough to say if it was a third grade teacher we couldn't fill for, we split them up, right? We'd say a third, a third, a third. That worked really, really well, this year we can't because of social distancing. So we have some, we, we have all of our large group areas, we're ready if we have to in, in some circumstances, and we've got some plans just in case, but um, but from a, from a standpoint that is going to cause us for a few days or, or a week or two, that could be something that, that, that really gets in the way of us continuing that, that educational progress too as well.
So after you hit the ten, say it's an eleven, twelve person, you can't find somebody, are you going to close a grade or a class or?
We will probably, we will, we will do the, we'll see what, what, what has to happen, so for instance, I've got four teachers in third grade. Then if, if we just third grade, second grade, eighth grade, um, we would look to keep those students virtual, because those, 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 uh, teachers are virtual, and then deploy those other substitute teachers elsewhere. Those are all things that we would, again, I would prefer to close a grade level before we close, or a classroom, before we close school.
And the teachers are, they're quarantined, but they have symptoms that they're not. They have two symptoms and they're at home, they're still doing work, coaching them?
Yep, yep, if they are well enough, we are having them continue to work. If they're not, then that kicks them into COVID, COVID sick time, which federal government has given every employee eight hours. Or that too, so it doesn't impact their, their sick time. We anticipate a lot of teachers fighting through a lot of stuff, because again, it's symptoms that we, we come to school with and you guys go to work with. Just like they do, and they're ready to work, they don't want to tap into that sick time, they don't want to tap into that COVID time unless they really, really have to. That's what that's there for as well too, so. So those are all things that we'll continue to, to monitor, and the school board will obviously be, be part of that as well.
I have one more question, I'm just asking a lot of questions to be clarified.
Okay.
Some of those things, so you have a sibling, uh, Arrowhead. And if they get quarantined, do they have two symptoms? Does the Merton kid, the sibling, do they have to quarantine?
Right now, we are saying no. It's recommended that they do. And dealing with Waukesha County, we are, we are going to be utilizing and just asking that family to really pay attention to the other child, other children in the house, um, unless there's a positive test, a positive test is very different than having symptoms. Correct, yep.
I'm just clarifying some of those things.
Well, some of the things, because other school districts are, it, it all depends on, you know, the, what, what your local says, and then what community decision making do you have, because you do have some local decision making when it comes to quarantine, and that would be a perfect example of one child in the house has a couple symptoms. Um, we haven't said that the whole house needs quarantine. We're not sending those symptoms home.
Another question I have. If your kid has allergies.
Yep.
And has symptoms. Your allergies can last longer than ten days, are they allowed for the month or?
That is a pre-existing condition, that is, you, you know, and that's really where, uh, again, it happened, I had a family call me today that said, Ron, my kid's has allergies and it's really bad, and he gets a sore throat, he gets a runny nose, and he coughs, and he sneezes. It's a pre-existing condition, perfect, come to school. Come to school. Because allergies, cold, flu, cold and flu season are different than like, like allergies, and right now allergies are going to be bad. They, they come and go, but if there's a no pre-existing condition, then, then that is perfectly set.
Do parents have to report those pre or?
Uh, that's working with Gail, it, it is, and most of the time, we do have allergies as part of the health. You know, some people say seasonal allergies under health conditions and things like that. And then it'll be the same thing with, with staff, whether they have underlying medical conditions. Um, that, that would be on that list on the student checklist. Um, you'll notice that we did, we, again, one thing that we removed was congestion. Because the CDC and what the state is saying is congestion, they took it off the student health checklist, because it wasn't a, a strong enough indicator for COVID, because I think what they've been getting is so many allergies, almost those questions about that too. And they just weren't seeing that connection between a COVID positive and congestion, what would be more allergies.
Last question, how, who decides, so like, oh, Hudson has these two things? Is it self-reported or is it teacher-reported?
That will be if they report it to an adult, and then Gail follows up with, and Gail, Melissa, or Barb, myself, Jen, who may be manning that area, if a child says, my stomach hurts and, you know, I've got diarrhea, that's two of the lists, that is going to send you home for ten days. Now, I've had three conversations literally where parents come to me and say, Ron, can you please hear my kid and say, you can't fake it? You know, don't fake it, because that's a huge lasting impact to that person, to those families, because it's a ten day ride home. And nobody wants to be there. So, but we'll continue to ask the questions, and this is going to sound foolish, but you know, your nurse, if you're Gail, you know, my stomach hurts, oh, you have to go to the bathroom. You know, he's, it's just normal stuff, and believe me, we're not looking to send kids home, because we know the impact, and that's why we're asking our families, please, keep kids home who are sick in the morning. Because if they come to school, tell us my stomach hurts and I got diarrhea. That's an automatic compared to just keep them home, and, and now we want them to be honest with us too as well, but at least that, that the parent can monitor that as well, because for one symptom, you know, typically something, a lot of families keep their children home anyway, and they always have, which is fine. And they just monitor it at home, we are going to be asking our families to continue to report why they're gone. And, and a lot of those things on that checklist, in the past, we'd always send kids home for it, and they'd wait twenty-four hours. The issue is, is no longer twenty-four hours. That's the kicker.
All right, I have a question. So if a kid is sent home or kept home because of symptoms that they might not necessarily normally have, or have home form before, are they going to be allowed to participate in the virtual learning, because in the past, if, oh, your kid's home sick, they can't do the work until they come back or get the work?
They would go virtual, they would slide into the virtual platform, and we would ask kids that when they're well enough, just like teachers, just like adults, work through things, when they are well enough, they go to the virtual platform. They are automatically set to the virtual platform, that's why we send a child home, every child got a whiteboard, a marker, an eraser, and our teachers will be training and be working towards and developing our kids to be ready for that day when they have to go virtual. Because more than likely, our kids who don't have, I mean, even the kids who just have one symptom, you know, that they would just stay home, they can jump into virtual learning any day of the week that we're offering.
If your child stays home sick and has two of the symptoms, but it's a head over, whatever. Can they return within the?
The only way they can return, if we send them home, if we send them home. If a parent keeps them home, they need to stay home and they report that they got diarrhea in the stomach ache, or a sore throat and a heavy cough. The only way they can come back to school after they report that is with a negative COVID test.
Within that ten day window?
Within the ten day window. Within the ten day window, they can get out of quarantine with a negative. If you just have symptoms, now, if you're in direct contact, it's a completely different scenario. If you have come into direct contact with a person with COVID, there is no way out of quarantine for fourteen days. You cannot come back to school within that fourteen day. As soon as Waukesha County tells us that you've been part of that quarantine.
All right, so for the people with junk symptoms and needing a negative test, if it happens, the tests aren't available, how are we going to deal with that?
You have ten days, and they just wait the ten days, and they come back to school, assuming they were twenty-four hours symptom-free. And we know that testing isn't readily available by the time you get an appointment, and we also know that some of the tests take anywhere between two and five days. And sometimes sooner, sometimes later. So they just have to wait out the ten days, then Jennifer, to your point, they would jump into virtual learning. That's where we want them to continue learning.
I understood his question concerning parents having some kind of lead time to know, do you recommend parents to monitor that network? More Waukesha County to? It's not that easy to.
It's, 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 it's easy to interpret, I think it's really easy to interpret, it doesn't get down to the Merton Community School District, because we're so small. Because we're so small, by monitoring that, you can kind of see where it is in the community or the census tract. And that's really where you can kind of say, hey, active cases, you know, and then you also give them the total population. So that's a really quality measure. And then the other quality measure is, is where is it amongst our kids, and we say our kids, when you take a look at the Arrowhead kids, because Arrowhead kids intermingled, we know, in volleyball, swimming, football, theater, soccer, wherever. It, that's, so there, there is an intermingling of kids, you can kind of get a sense, and that's really where we take a look at it. You know, when I talked last Wednesday, when we said, is anybody having a COVID cases, there's crickets, there was one in Arrowhead. That was active at that time, that was about ready to be in, or in. So the dashboard is, is, is helpful, because it also takes a look at, uh, from a community wide, uh, it gives us obviously the, the hospitalization rates too as well, uh, from a community standpoint, obviously, that's really important about this. Again, if our hospitals start to go up, then it becomes a community-wide issue. Then it's a community-wide issue, but right now, um, we just didn't get, that's control health, just kicked in all their data, and in conjunction with that, we also get Freyers data too as well. Um, so it's, it's more so interesting, I didn't get a chance, I check it once a day, it's always updated by three o'clock. Uh, the actual date, so Monday through Friday. But, uh, it's, it's a dashboard to watch what's happening in the community or in other communities. Because every community has been hit at different times, certainly.
I can also say for accessibility reasons, it is easier to see the information and understand it from a computer screen than it is from their mobile site. Because not everything that has been updated in the last couple of weeks is available from the mobile site, but it is from the, um, computer site.
To the point of the level of will it be the day, the bad day, or will it be a point where, okay, now, third grade got shut down, or is there a warning that we could get there?
We're going to be, yes, we're, we're going to do the very, very best we can, again, the, the, the phone call at five AM, you know, to a school or to a grade level or classroom, those things we're going to be able to forecast. I'm hoping, I'm really, I'm forecasting that we're going to be able to, to predict that. Um, because our, our goal is to not only prepare our kids and our families, but yet ultimately to prepare our staff to be able to say, okay, now, we got to make that flip, and we're going to do it just like that, um, as well too, so. I, I don't have a magic ball, but, uh, but, but typically, again, we can monitor everything, and again, it, it could be all of a sudden we get slammed with, you know, twelve absences in one day. You know, and traditionally, we've been able to handle that, and we, we may be able to handle twelve or thirteen, given that day. Um, we do have contingency plans, obviously, they're not great, but it's putting two court, two classrooms in the gym, that's where we're learning today, because we know it's still super important that they're here, and we know what kind of inconvenience it is. Believe me, every time there's a snow day, I hear about it, because it's a huge inconvenience, and I understand, I really do. But that's why, in my opinion, we've been blessed with the opportunity for local decision making. Because if you take a look at, you know, countywide or statewide, what's been in some of the areas that they do. So that has happened, it really doesn't take into account what's happening in your walls. Are you able to social distance, are you able to do all the mitigation measures set forth by the CDC? And if you check all these lists, according to the CDC, we should be going to school, that's why we're going to school. That's why we're not relying just on the Harvard model. There's Brian, and all these other metrics and all these situations that we can control internally, that we've been blessed with, that you guys have a lot of us to do, and our community has given us, to be able to make sure that those kids come home through the door. And we're really, really fortunate with, with the staff that we have, the plan we have in place, and the support that we've been given from our community. Because we have oh, seven hundred thirty kids are going to walk through the door in eighty-six who have chosen virtual, and because that's that was their option, and we support that, and we're going to do everything we can to support those learners, because a lot of them are going to come back to us. Could be in a week, two weeks, three weeks, semester, trimester, we're ready for them, and we want to make sure that they're part of our educational community. And, uh, a big thank you to Becca, Jay, Lori, Mary, Artika, Abby, Jim, and, and, and the team, Katie Lobin, for all of their development of our teachers the last, well, they've been on campus for nine days. So we're ready. Anything else? All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we have future meetings in the Jeddah. Someone want to put on the September twenty-eighth meeting or the October twenty-sixth meeting?
Uh, yeah, the ninth is the is our annual meeting. Is the, did I see the fifteenth? I got that wrong, fifteenth.
Fifteenth, that's correct.
Fifteenth, yep, September fifteenth, that's our annual meeting, that's a budget hearing, uh, as well. Uh, but the twenty-eighth, um, and I, I do believe we can go at six o'clock. If that works for everybody. That's good, because I think we can start now.
Can I add an agenda item for the twenty-eighth? Um, I would like to make sure that there's an update on our community status for our parents, and how each element of our school is going virtual and face-to-face.
It'll be a reopening of the Jeddah. So the twenty-sixth meeting, we did, that's, we said for six, but six o'clock. And I would like a closed session, uh, sometime to talk about teacher compensation as well. And I think we should probably do that in September, I think that would be appropriate, even at that time.
Yeah, I just either, I, I think we should just spend the, the budget repair bill. You know, if we have one, if we don't have one in September, we're pushing back to October, I hope, but they don't do anything before the October meeting, we go back into the old last by any budget.
Correct.
I think it is, I think a discussion of teacher competition beforehand, even without a budget repair bill, is necessary.
Just as a follow-up from some of the conversations we have.
Yeah.
What, July, June, July, I think this is a follow-up, because there was some requests for information that, uh, the board asked me, and I can present that. At that time, so. It's five o'clock, quick?
Yeah.
Yep, Phil, does that work, right? Yep. Phil, does that work, Ray?
If there's nothing else, then, uh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion and second, all in favor, that say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Hold the same sign, the adjourned.